Okay, so this, I am going to open the December 20th, 2017, meeting of the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Lakeville. Our first order of business is to meet with Seth Pickering to receive a certificate for reducing Lakeville's energy consumption by at least 20 percent. So Seth is here, and I'll give a little bit of backstory with this. Lakeville is a green community, so that is a state program in which we are involved with receiving different grants and implementing different grant money for the sake of reducing our carbon footprint. So this is all good stuff. We reached this major milestone as a green community, reducing Lakeville's energy consumption by at least 20 percent after five years or more as a green community. So that was from FY 11 to FY 16. So this is obviously a big deal, so Seth has a piece of paper to commemorate the occasion. So would you like to, yeah?
Sure. Is this good? Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So, thank you Chairman Burke, Ms. Hollenbeck, and Mr. Partley for the opportunity to come to Lakeville and present the town with a certificate, marking a significant milestone as a green community here in the Commonwealth. We have about 10 to date that have met their 20 percent reduction goal over the five-year periods. So Lakeville achieved a 20 percent reduction in municipal energy usage from its baseline year of fiscal year 2011 for the five-year period beginning in fiscal year 2012 and ending in fiscal year 2016. So congratulations, it's a really great job. So this achievement reflects a lot of hard work and extraordinary efforts by the community. And the community's exhibited, you know, a lot of diligence by investing in energy upgrades at municipal facilities, and your continued commitment to remaining active in the Green Communities Program to meet the 20 percent energy reduction goal is proof of Lakeville's position as an energy leader here in the Commonwealth as well. So Lakeville was one of the first green communities that served primarily by a public power provider, Middlebury Gas and Electric, and this has been a really great team effort here in Lakeville, as most good things are. But I'd like to recognize a couple of people in particular for their contributions and support. First of all, Rita, Rita Garbit. My experience with green communities is in towns of this size, with this former government, if the town administrator is not on board supportive, doesn't really happen. So that's a, that's a big part of the deal. Secondly, all of Lakeville's selectmen since 2011. They got things started, they've continued things, and been very cooperative. It's been a real pleasure to work with the select boards here in the Town of Lakeville. Lakeville's Energy Committee, been very active, a couple of people in particular, Larry Simpson, who hopefully will be here tonight, really helped get things started. He started bugging me at the office early on, and did a nice job to get things going. Mr. Jim Kenny, his attention to detail and his organizational skills make the Lakeville annual report and any type of information that I have to get for Jim, some of the highest quality stuff that we get in our program in the entire state. His attention to detail is fantastic, he's a Naval Academy grad and a submariner, and I know that Admiral Rickover would be proud of him.
He made my day.
It's a pleasure for me to work with you, Jim. Couple other guys, real quick, who were involved for short periods of time. Bob Iafredi and Jim Merritt. Bob was the building commissioner here when the stretch code was actually proposed and passed at town meeting, and Jim Merritt was on the planning board at the time and gave to date one of the best intros at a town meeting for the article, asking for the town to adopt the stretch code. So those two guys. And then Sandy Richter is here for the Middlebury Gas and Electric. Sandy provides all of Lakeville's electric energy usage by individual account to the DOER Energy Tracking System called Mass Energy Insight. This is done voluntarily by Middlebury G&amp;E and by Sandy, they don't have to do it.
I don't have to do it.
That energy tracking software is available free to every municipal entity here in Massachusetts, and it's a really powerful tool. You guys have used it very well, and Jim is very well-versed in it. You can see where you're using energy and how much. So it's, it's a really, it's a really good thing, and you guys are doing a great job with that. But if Sandy and the Middlebury G&amp;E didn't provide the data, it would have to come from all your cost centers, in all likelihood, and that can be a little cumbersome. So, thanks to Sandy and G&amp;E. And last but not least, Nathan Darling, your building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer, that's a pretty big title there.
It goes on a little further.
So, it's been a real pleasure working with Nathan since he's been in his position. He's been Lakeville's point person for the last couple of years, and he's a great deal of the reason that the town has received to date $546,598 in green community grants since July of 2012. Of that money, about $300,000 of it are projects that are done. We've got about $247,000 more, right Nate?
Yep.
That we're working on, and we're gonna hope that we get those done sometime in later fiscal year 18 or the beginning of 19, so that we can get you in line for another competitive grant, hopefully in fiscal year 2019. So, thanks to everybody for being so good at being a green community, it's a big help for me. And so what I have in here is a certificate, I'm gonna have to put my glasses on for this So, this is from the Commonwealth, you know, it says Town of Lakeville, "For its outstanding leadership as a designated green community, having fulfilled the goal of Green Community Designation Criteria in Three by reducing its municipal energy consumption by at least 20 percent after five years of implementing its energy reduction plan in accordance with the Green Communities designation and grant program established pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 25A, Section 10." This was actually, this was done in September of 2017, the certificate, so that's when it was dated, and it's signed by Charles D. Baker, Governor, Karen E. Polito, Lieutenant Governor, Matthew A. Beaton, Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and Judith F. Judson, who's the Commissioner of the Department of Energy Resources. So, that's what I've got, a short and sweet, and I can't say enough what a pleasure it is to work with Lakeville in this program, and I'm right up the street, so it's convenient. Thank you to everybody for your efforts. We got, we got a lot more stuff that we can do if you want to, and I look forward to doing that.
Seth, thanks for taking the time to come in tonight, I really appreciate your insights on, on what we're doing, and thanking everybody for their hard work. I think we're committed to the idea of this because it's a resource that we can implement and have a positive change on what's going on, so.
I'm glad that the program exists, and I'm glad that we have a wonderful team to implement that, so thanks to all of you for doing that. You're welcome, thank you.
All right. All right, so our next agenda item is to meet with Jeff Barton of Bountiful Farms, Inc., but we're gonna have to hold off until 6:45 because that's when it's posted for, so we'll go through a few of these other smaller things for the next few minutes. Thanks again, take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, so, number four is to review and vote to sign the deed for 239 Main Street. We actually have a request to postpone the closing until the end of January.
January 26th.
So.
But, if I may, Aaron.
Yep.
I did talk, speak with Sharon Everett, Town Council, and she said the selectmen should still vote to sign the deed.
Yep.
Vote to sell the property, execute the deed, and then she underlined some information to authorize one selectman or myself to sign any other paperwork that comes down the line.
Right, yep. I saw this email, so, does anybody have any questions about this?
No.
So did you, you get any information as to what's going on with the delay?
Well, when I got the call this morning from David's assistant, she just found out this morning that the bank had asked to delay the closing until January 26th. When I called her back, it turns out that her boss, David, had asked the buyer, because of the holidays and everything else, and I guess he had met with Nate yesterday, you know, some questions on the, the split of the land. Nothing bad, just he wanted to clarify things, the septic system. So he had asked the bank, it wasn't the bank asking.
Okay, all right.
So, he has full intentions of going through with it, but he just wanted to wait until after the holidays.
What's the nature of, where's the, the form for the, for the extension?
It's in the sign folder.
All right, let me see.
Should be, is it right on top? It's, it's the same one you signed to extend it to the 29th.
Do you have a copy of the, of the purchase and sales contract?
I think you might still have it.
Interesting.
I've got the appraisal, but my first one says.
It's time to start again.
They have spoken.
It's the smell against me.
Yeah.
Where are you?
I think I have plenty of candy.
Have a long night.
No, that's not what I'm looking at, I just wanted to check something. I was just checking on the, on the deposit, terms of the deposit. So the deposit, if the guy flakes out and doesn't buy it, we still keep the deposit based on the terms of that. I just wanted to make sure that was the case, because this isn't asking to extend the mortgage commitment, so.
We'll need that in the vote.
So I guess I will entertain a motion to...
Sell the property.
Yeah, hang on a second.
Oh, for the extension first.
Well, I guess it'll just be one motion. So the motion is to sign the deed for 239 Main Street, and other, and other ancillary documents necessary for, for transferring the property, and to authorize Rita Garbit to sign any and all other documents necessary to, or convenient to convey the property at 239 Main Street to South Coast Redevelopment LLC, including without limitation any and all affidavits, settlement statements, and/or customary forms required by buyer's lender, and to extend, or to sign the extension of the purchase and sales agreement. Time for performance, which is paragraph six, from December 29 to January 26, 2018.
I'll second.
All right, well that was, I entertained that motion.
Okay, I guess I moved it.
I will make that motion. You seconded it.
You started it so long ago, I couldn't remember what it actually started with.
I, all right, the motion carries, it's unanimous?
Must be how you feel when I go through OPEB.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rita.
And just an update, the assesses did move in Monday. They're in the conference room, still unpacking boxes, but for the most part, I'm gonna have Highway go over and clean out the items that will go to the transfer station, and, because I called to schedule a walkthrough this morning, and that's when I found out about the extension, so it was good that I called.
Yep.
We're gonna do a press release in the Middlebury, is that, just to let, we've left a sign on the door over there, and here, just to, the phones are working here, the IT has all been connected, so.
Okay, great. Yeah, and later tonight, we're gonna talk with Nate about, it's funny, when he called you Nathan, I didn't know who he was talking about at first, I'm like, who's Nathan? Nathan's hot dogs?
I wish.
But we're gonna talk with Nate later about the budget redesign for the town office building to incorporate all of that, so that's forthcoming. So agenda item number two is to meet with Jeff Barton of Bountiful Farms, Inc., regarding the letter of non-opposition for a medical marijuana cultivation facility. So Jeff has requested a, a meeting with us to discuss this idea. They are considering a property located at Five Harding Street, and they have met with Nate already to discuss the, the project. They've included with us, or I should say, they have included with their request to meet with us, a letter, as well as a presentation relative to their company and their goals, and different aspects of, of the, the operation. Do you have a copy of all this stuff, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Right. So, thanks for coming in, it's great to see you all again, or some of you again. Tell us what you have in mind.
Sure, and so again, just some introductions, Jeff Barton, so I'm CEO of Bountiful Farms. Joining me tonight is Senator Minart, is acting as an advisor to, to the organization.
Making sure they all behave themselves.
We're trying. Caleb Gilder is co-founder and chairman of the company, and Paul Rathbun is responsible for the property acquisition and, and management. So they've joined me and talked about the various aspects, and so I'll try and keep the presentation piece of it pretty brief, I think you all have seen the presentation, as you know, yeah, again. So I was in front of you all about a year ago, previous, with a previous organization, Natural Remedies, which received a letter, it was recently rescinded because we seized operations. My, my capital partner pulled out, tried to get the, raise the money myself, could not do that. I was introduced to the Gilders by our, we both shared the same attorney, and was hired to run the, the business, run the operations of Bountiful Farms. So we're back in front of you all, and I appreciate that, and specifically requesting a letter of non-opposition for a cultivation facility on, at Five Harding Street, conditional upon the property meeting zoning requirements. And what I wanted to do is just, again, briefly give you an introduction to Bountiful Farms, and who we are, and then get into, talk about the property and how we wanna altogether go forward with that, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
And then obviously entertain any questions that you have as we go forward. As before, I don't go through slide by slide and hit that, but I just wanna hit some, some key points that I think are important. So first of all, and what got me interested in, in wanting to join Bountiful is two main things. One is that the focus is on the patient, and I say patients specifically, because it is meant for, for medical use, and, and so producing very high-quality, consistent medical-grade products, cannabis products, and, and, you know, and again, medical, I'll highlight, because it is the policy to be focused on, on, on medical until it's federally legal, so that there is not gonna be a short-term interest in, in pursuing recreational, and I wanna just address that right off. The, the second point, and why, and why I was interested in this, is, and it's a key piece of, of really how the Gilders operate, and so this is a family business, and as you know, when I was in front of you before, I, I founded and operated my own family business for, for 20 years, it was Water Fresh Farm. We produced, grew hydroponically, produced, and opened up a retail operation, and, and so that piece of it, and that's how I wanted to run Natural Remedies, and that's, but that is the Gilder commitment, to running it, to treating the employees and working with the community as, as a family-run business, and that is an important piece of it to me. And when I talk about the, the community as another key aspect of, of being a part of that community, and that takes the place of, you know, not beyond just the, the community host agreement, but also it's the draw, the jobs that would be provided here, and providing preferential treatment to, to Lakeville residents, and then it goes beyond that, I'll get, get into that in a, in a little bit more detail, about just the Gilder way of, of being a fabric of that community, and looking for ways to, to impact and invest in the community. Okay? So, the, the management team, just again, very, very briefly, I'll address the questions as you have it. So, I'm CEO and have responsibility for the overall operations of the company. A cousin is the, Gilder Keeler is the CFO, he's, brings a lot of economic training and financial training to, to the operation, and Zachary Taylor is the GM responsible for the cultivation. He has 10 years plus growing in Colorado for two of the largest growers, and the, he was lured here because of the commitment to, to focus specifically on high, very high-quality middle grade, and that's why he is elected to, to come east and, and join the team. Again, so the, the next thing, and again, I'll talk about, this is why, I think is a very important piece to me, and I think important to the community, is what the, the Gilder family brings. So first and foremost is, is the investment in the company. So Caleb and his brother Luke founded the company, they have put $10 million of their own money into the, the startup and operations, to get the company up and running and going forward, and so they're, they've put their own money on the line. But then the, the other piece that I think is important is, is their belief of how, how to be a member, a true member of that community, and for that, I think it's best, I'd like Caleb to just talk a little bit about what that means to the, the family.
So, my brother and I came up with this a couple of years back, sitting around the table with our mom. We were looking at where the market was going, and the good that it was doing on other areas, the types of diseases that affected, the type of people it helped. Now, we've always done very well, this has been happening for a long time, but one of the things we've always noticed is that it really pays to pay forward to the communities and to the entities that allow you to get ahead in the first place. Now what we see with marijuana, my brother and I felt strongly, was that, yeah, we could create a good business here, but we could also help a lot of people doing it. It almost seemed like because we could, we were obligated to. If you can help, you should, and we're in a position where we can do so. It's about it. I mean, everyone that works for us is like family, that's true, and we work with them side by side in the trenches. We're very involved with Jeff and with the management of the company, and we really are serious about seeing the ideals upon which this company was founded carried through, not just in our lifetime, but into our legacy and our predecessors. This is something that not only we can build, but we can pass on, and we think we can create a good story here. It really boils down to it.
Just to add to that is, so, the, the wealth in the, the family was initially created by the grand, by the grandfather, and a key piece of how, and how he set the tone for the family is giving back into the community, and there's been a variety of ways from, from donating to the schools that he went to, that, that his family had, had gone to, as well as other things. They, he's based in New York City, and so a lot of that.
The Gilder-Lerman Institute for American History is largest privately-held collection of American history in the United States. My grandfather created the expectation that, and the cultural history, I mean, a lot of people can say they like to do things, we can prove it, all you have to do is look online, and our sources are there and viable. We have a cultural history of, like I said, previously paying forward in other ways, such as whether it be our commitment to Yale College in Connecticut, whether it be our commitment to Northfield Mount Hermon here in Massachusetts, whether it be going through the Gilder-Lerman Institute for American History. You know, we really do value the heritage and being able to give forward that which we've done and that which we will continue to do to other people, whether or not they're in a position to seize it for themselves or not. I mean, one of the greatest things that the Gilder-Lerman Institute does do is that even now, principal at your schools, local schools, anyone can just hop online, fill out an application, send it in, and you guys will receive exhibits, you will receive material, you will receive books, you will receive, free of charge, everything you would need to actually teach and pursue a course on different aspects of American history, and that's just a gift back, because without being able to look back, we can't really move forward. We need to have a clear view of where we came from to know where we're going, and this is not something that my brother or I take lightly. Our family worked real hard to be able to get where they're at, and they've passed these same values and lessons on to us. I'm sure almost everyone in this room knows what their parents are, who they came from, and what was important to the people that came before and allowed for you to be where you're at. We don't take this lightly. We do believe in these things, and I hope to prove it to you.
Great.
Okay. So that was really the, the background of, of the organization and the company, and again, I kept it brief, but in, in light of your time, if there's questions that you want and ask about that, that's great, but at this point, I wanted you to just shift a little bit and talk about the property.
Okay.
So, as we talked about the property, this Five Harding Street, the, the, and there's actually, yeah, Paul, why don't you put that up? So, we did prepare the property to talk, so you can see it, but in the presentation, it is a little hard to put there, but you have the, the property and then the zoning. The key piece to, to talk about, so this is currently business zone. The bylaw is industrial zone. The, and Harding Street is, you know, is a mix between, a bit of a patchwork between industrial and business. So right now, we do not meet the zoning reg, zoning regs for this. So what, what Paul and, and I'm gonna have Paul go through in a little bit more detail so you can see what we're talking about, and again, you know, we're talking, it's cultivation only that we're talking about. But when we met with, with Nate Darling, we talked about the fact that it, it doesn't meet the zoning, and what's the right way forward, and as far as we can see, there's two different avenues for us to move forward. One is to, to change the zoning into, into industrial, so then it would fit, or creating some sort of an overlay district in that area, which would be a bylaw change. Either, either, you know, there's gonna be a certain amount of, of vetting that we need to go through with the, the town boards, and then it's gonna come down to a town meeting in order to, to get the authority to, to do whatever way is the best way forward. From our perspective, because time is important in this idea... From our perspective, because time is important in this, ideally, we'd love it to be in a, some sort of special town meeting, if we can get it moved through the process quick enough, as opposed to waiting until next June. Again, we're gonna look to, to work with, with you all and the boards to determine what's the best way forward. And, and then from that matter, what's the best timing or, or way to work this out, assuming there is a, an opening or, you know, you're interested in, in letting us pursue this. Paul, if you wouldn't mind, just, I guess, explaining what this is and what you've got there. Any questions about the property?
The, the property located at Five Harding Street, on the southern side of Route 44, is currently owned by Harding Nursery and LLC. It's Ron Turrowitz at Eze Cat Exhibition out of Middleborough. Ron's owned it since early 1990s. He's done nothing with it. There have been several other interested parties in, in purchasing it, but for whatever reason, they have not gone through with the, the completion of the transaction. So it's a just under 32-acre parcel of land with 625 feet of frontage on Harding Street. It, it was formerly the Lakeville Nurseries Company back in the eighties, and prior to that, it was owned by the Hots family, wherein they ran a mink farm back in the sixties through the year of seventies. There is still a small red, two-story barn building in this area where they used, used it for storage of their bushes, their terraniums, miracles, that sort of thing. And there are some old dilapidated wooden structures in and around this area. This was information taken from a map that Outback Engineering had done for Tim Spillane. Tim Spillane was interested in purchasing it two years ago. So what they did was they reconfigured it based on the available land, which is 32 acres, with really around 17 acres of it high and dry. They've allowed for the setbacks. They have located on it the bordering vegetated wetlands, as well as isolated wetlands, and the Lennon Washburn Brook, as well as Polcoy Brook, which is the border of Middleboro. It's currently a business-owned property. The adjacent properties are owned by the Colonial Trophy, Monkey's Liquors over here, and then the McGee family, where they park cars that overflow from their dealerships. Across the street on the northerly side are two small parcels of vacant land that are presently zoned business. The rest of the surrounding land around it is owned by, or was formerly owned by the DeCroce family. That's Millennial Circle, that's all industrially zoned. We've, we've located approximately a 40,000 square foot footprint in our, in the upland area. It's just for discussion purposes, it's just a conceptual plan right now. In the event that we go forward with it, we'd be able to begin doing some of the more detailed engineering work that would be required for the planning board, zoning board, as well as the conservation commission. There is an existing driveway on it. We would propose paving it. There's no additional curb cut that we would need, but we would need a driveway permit from the Board of Selectmen. There is a gravel driveway to the rear of Cross Street. We would not use that as access to or fro, from the property. Maybe there'd be discussion as, as for use as a, as an emergency exit or entrance for fire or police. That's the property. Would, would require a change from business to industrial. And again, that's something that would, would look for you from, look for you for guidance on.
Paul, I have a question.
Sure.
So the, the, the portion that goes out to Cross Street, is that an existing way? You said it's gravel now?
Yeah, it's a gravel driveway.
That's how we used to drive in there.
Yeah.
A pre-existing, it looks like it bifurcates that, that piece of wetland.
It goes through it, actually.
Okay, but it's, it's currently there?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's interesting. I don't, I've been back there through, through Route 44, but I haven't, that Cross Street thing is interesting.
Yeah.
I didn't know that that was there.
Quite honestly, the, the mink breeding facilities, they're just, just small barns. They were on either side of that gravel driveway to the rear of it.
Huh.
Yeah.
Interesting.
And every once in a while, you'll see squished mink out on Route 44. They're feral now. They still, they still reside on that area. The back area of the property is heavily wooded. The National Wildlands Trust owns this parcel over here, all right? They have had discussions with Outback Engineering, they've had discussions with Ron Turrowitz about acquiring an easement to the rear of the property for the maintenance of green space. It's something that I think we'd be open to discussing with them, okay? The other properties are residential properties to the rear, and as I've mentioned, business-owned properties adjacent to it. There is town water that runs along it, so we would have to talk about a municipal agreement extension on that. As well, there's a natural gas filling station that the town of Middleboro established there many years ago for their future fleet of naturally-powered gas, which they have.
Which will never happen.
But there is, there is an existing gas line.
Yeah.
Okay?
Great. No, it's interesting. Does anybody have any questions for Paul relative to the, the presentation on the property?
Oh, no, I, I somewhat get that. Certainly I'd wanna get into, when we get into your business plan, the size of the building and things like that. So I don't have any questions regarding that. I'll save my two cents worth for later.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have other questions related to, you know, some of the difficulties or perhaps discussing the difficulties of taking a 31-point-something acre parcel and putting a 40,000 square foot building on it, and how you would sell that as a zoning change when the potential for the revenue of developing it in a business area, I'm not sure what we could put on it, but it's a lot more than 40,000 square feet. So the tax revenue generated from that may be a contentious, I don't wanna say contentious, but it's certainly a point of concern in a zoning change as to what it could be. And I understand that, you know, we've had this conversation too about some of our other parcels, because due to the setbacks and everything else, you know, things just don't get developed. And so you either have it life fallow, or there's something actually, I'm just kind of bringing it up for sake of the conversation.
Certainly the most notable potential tenant prior to Spillane's being interested was Mucka Baskett.
That's correct.
And, and that somewhat fell through for a lot of, a variety of reasons. But once I understand the scope of your building, then I can understand what else might be necessary that we have to jump through. We, we've always talked about Harding Street being the right place for this type of a business. I certainly would support a change to industrial. Having said that, going to a town meeting, that's a real crap shoot.
I understand that.
But, but I think, I, I as one-third of the select group would not oppose that at all. I think it's the right place for the business, and I would support it for a variety of reasons. I mean, you're either doing business where you can do a substantial business of, you know, 40,000, 60,000 square foot business. However, they've tried to market it for many, many years. There's other issues. If you bring in hundreds of employees, then it starts becoming a problem putting them onto Route 44. So a big structure, we'd love to see a big structure there, but I think that the cost might overwhelm that party to comply with what the state wanted regarding widening roads.
For traffic studies, right.
Lights. It's, it's a nightmare. But this type of a business there might, might work. And I, I would be one of the supporters of that.
Ms. Hollenbeck, do you have some questions about the potential tax revenues?
No, I think I'm bringing it up for the sake of, again, the strategy for a town meeting.
Okay.
And the concern.
Okay.
For that, related to the fact that there are more acres to be developed there, and trying to counteract the, and I looked through the host agreement, you know, you've got payments related to, because it's just gonna be cultivation, so it's not gonna be a, an agreement based upon sales, because you'll be selling somewhere else. You'll have your dispensary location somewhere else that you'll be shipping to. So it's, you know, we've got that payment, which I haven't done the math, I don't know exactly with Nate, you know, what we could potentially put there for, if it was business-owned, you know, with the setbacks, the potential square footage that you could have there, what the revenue would generate. But those are the questions that I would want anticipated.
Okay.
Because coming to town meeting.
Okay.
That's what we'd be facing in terms of a zoning change.
Right. The, what, they're both alluding to is the, the concept of what's the possible best use based on the zoning? And would this, a, a development of this size really be the best use in terms of getting the most potential tax revenue? Now, there's always the, the debate of this is real and the other side is hypothetical, right?
That's correct.
But that doesn't necessarily matter when you're at town meeting. You know town meetings.
Yeah.
Paul's a former selectman, he knows.
Moderated, too.
You don't, you don't necessarily know what, whether it's factual, or whether it's reasonable, or whether, whether people are gonna jump behind something if the, if it hits them in the gut, and it could be completely off-base. So I think what we're kind of alluding to is, there, there should be an overall strategy on how you want to present and advocate for a zoning change that anticipates all those different factors. One, you know, the potential tax revenue or the potential upside of having this developed to the maximum potential versus this. This is a very specific use. It's not as if we're changing, um, no, I think you're okay in the sense of it's not spot zoning, because the, the adjacent area has plenty of, of zoning similar to it. So I think you're okay with that, but this is a, one particular parcel being changed for one particular use. It, it, you really have to make sure that, that you're, that it's presented in a way where people can't poke holes in it.
Right.
And I think that, you know, that's.
That's the trick.
And the concept of a special town meeting may actually backfire with this group, to have a special town meeting that's separate and apart from the annual town meeting, because first of all, sometimes we have a, a problem getting a quorum. But secondly, it brings up the issue, and we've, we've talked about a zoning change for allowing for the use, for an RMD to not point back to it only being a nonprofit as well, that we have a concern with how or well that would go through town meeting. If it's not part of an annual town meeting, people start to get excited over having an opinion. And what happens is, you're gonna have the emotions come in as opposed to the business sense, or, you know, taking a look at it from a rational perspective, as opposed to what might happen if people start hyping it up, because this is a, a marijuana meeting, is what it would be, you know, looked at as.
Yeah.
And I, you know, we, right.
What's nice about how we've operated thus far is the decisions to, to issue letters of non-opposition. And, and we like you personally and like what you're trying to do. I mean, I think we have faith in, in you as, as somebody involved in this. You, you are very sincere and you, you have the credentials to support what you're trying to do. So I don't think that there's a problem from a credibility standpoint, but we can operate on this level and things can happen. If you take it to the town meeting level, it, it gives people, especially if it's a special town meeting, it gives people the ability to mobilize and, and do what I say as expand the electorate.
Yeah.
Now, we're very successful at town meeting when the same 80 to 100 people show up. Well, hopefully 100, because that's the quorum. But when there's a contentious issue and the people against an issue bring an extra 100 people to the meeting that are all gonna vote no, you're sunk. And, and so, I mean, just so you, you understand the backstory to all this, it's a two-thirds vote for a zoning change, so that makes it extra difficult to get over the hump.
Right.
So I, I personally wouldn't advocate, or, or I wouldn't, I wouldn't put forward a special town meeting specifically just for this. It, it wouldn't, it, for a couple of different reasons. One, every town meeting is precious in the sense that we fight to get a quorum. So, you know, that's one piece of it. The second is, you have to vet this idea through different committees and the planning board. Unfortunately, even if you wanted to try to do that more quickly, you probably wouldn't get through it until June anyway. The wheels of government, unfortunately, even at the municipal level, are horribly slow. And that's no reflection on the people that implement the government. I think that everybody here, including Nate, doesn't believe that.
Might be, no, I think that's true.
That was a good save.
Criticism's okay.
There's nothing to do with them.
It's mine, everyone. It was a good save for Nate.
It really is more of a reflection on, on the fact that you're dealing with volunteer boards. So the planning board meets once a month, sometimes twice a month, and they need to review stuff, and they need to have their hearings, and they have to give notice to all the abutters, and they have to, so the mechanics of having these meetings is, is very cumbersome. So, you know, just, I, so personally, I don't think the, the idea of doing it sooner than June is a reasonable one for those two reasons.
And you don't have any meetings scheduled between now and June anyway, right? Do you, or do you have?
Town meetings?
No.
No, we just had our fall special town meeting, which.
In November. We typically do them six months apart.
Do the winter one?
No, and typically I would say that the fall town meeting would be your best chance anyways to get it going through, because we'll have a school issue, I'm sure, at this, you know, upcoming annual town meeting. We'll have a much larger quorum than what we need, because it will be, we put it at the end of the warrant anyways. But November is the time to be able to get things going through in a much more, I guess, expeditious manner.
Yeah, well, I.
Not that you want to wait till November, but.
No, exactly, from the other side, it's.
Right, if you had, if you had the ideal situation and you knew November is the better meeting to do it than June, for the sake of the fact that there's 100 people at the November meeting and there's 300 at, at the June one.
Okay, I, I get it.
Right, I, I think it's a great location, but having said that, when we talk about a grow facility versus a full recreational retail facility, where if you will, the town gets 6% of the take, that's a different sell when you say that's a hundred-million-dollar business. And 6% of that, I can go to the taxpayers and say, these are substantial numbers. And I, I support the location. I don't know that I support just a grow facility. There's no money in it basically for the town. And, and then you get into the zoning issues of business versus medical, you know, whether you give us 50,000, 100,000. That isn't the money that would interest it, you know? The, the building would help, but getting a percentage of what we expect in the state of Massachusetts to be 6% for retail, that's a substantial number. So I haven't got into the business plan aspect of it. I certainly support the location.
Sure. And as I said, we, we don't have plans for, for retail there. I, I, you know, we'll talk with.
Yeah.
Work with the town, but obviously this isn't mutually exclusive for there being a retail facility on the Kenneth Wells either. So, you know, it's a matter of, it, it's not like we're gonna take away that revenue or the revenue potential.
No, exactly.
Something that's gonna.
Exactly, but it's an easy sell for me at town meeting if there was $100,000 retail revenue, that we can work out that math, what the town gets.
Okay, well, I.
But, but that's just the town meeting aspect, it's not so much us.
Yeah.
I would like that area zoned industrial, irregardless of what you folks do.
Okay. So, you know, again, I had asked whether or not, you know, so how we go forward, right? So one is, is whether or not you could vote, grant a letter of non-opposition conditional upon meeting zoning requirements. And then the second is just your counsel on, all right, what's the best way to go forward? Is it, you know, we need to start the vetting process, is that, what's the, the right vehicle? Is it the planning board that we, you know, to have a meeting with, or?
Right.
I don't know what the.
I mean, you're kinda stuck in a position where, you know, you wanna move forward, but you need all your ducks lined up and you can't seem to get them, you know, lined up, because it's going to all be dependent upon town meeting vote and trying to do the public hearings to get to the town meeting vote and trying to get everything. So you certainly don't want, you wanna know that we're willing to support a letter of non-opposition before you go through all the efforts of having the public hearings and trying to put it out there and getting to town meeting.
Right.
And that's what you're looking for the, the letter for.
Right. And then just what's the right, and, and your support to go, you know, in front of the other boards?
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and I guess that's, so that's one question is the letter, and then the second question is, what's the right process? Is it, is it to schedule and go in front of the planning board? Is that the, the like, the, the right way to go forward as we begin the vetting process? And that's my, part of my question to you, is I don't know what's the right board to go through to start.
Can you answer that, and Nate can perhaps pipe in? I'm sure you're all capable of doing it too. But Nate?
I was trying to mix it up.
Well, right, right, I don't want Nate, you, you got a attaboy in the earlier meeting. Well, right, right, I don't want Nate, you got an attaboy in the early meeting, so-
Turn your keepers, turn your keepers. There's a handful of different ways in which you can go forward with a zoning change. And obviously, all of them result in a, well, hopefully result in a two-thirds town meeting vote, so-
When is that changing?
I think that a respectful way would be go sit unofficially with the planning board and see if they would even entertain a conversation or give you support.
Yeah.
Ultimately, the Board of Selectmen have to issue a memo to the planning board and ask them to hold a public hearing. So, I mean, you have a couple of different ways to do it. If the Selectmen so chose, they could go ahead and send a memo to the planning board for, to hold a public hearing on this. But I think you have time and I agree with Aaron, I would go for that. And I, I don't see as though you'd have any time to get it on anything earlier than June. And then you wouldn't hold a meeting in May and then another one in June anyway. So, I'd definitely go for that.
And I think the advantage of dealing with the planning board in an unofficial capacity in the sense that you, maybe you get on an agenda just to discuss the project with them.
So, is it a regular meeting or is it like an authorized-
Yeah, you just go to a regular meeting.
Planning board meeting and we just say, you know-
Just have a conversation with them and bring this and just basically do the same pitch to them. The value in that is that, that is, as much as we have to say about the letter of non-opposition, they really are the ones that would stand up at a town meeting and make a recommendation relative to a zoning change. So, if you get buy-in from the planning board, and trust me, it's not gonna come from us sending a memo to them saying, do this. They don't really like us.
That doesn't work either.
I shouldn't say that. We get along with them.
But it's true.
No, we get along with them cordially and professionally, but they have, they have their own opinions and they have their own purview and we respect their purview and you really want to get buy-in from them independent of us.
Okay.
You're not gonna have a problem getting a letter of non-opposition from us, is my opinion. But the zoning piece is a huge, is a huge shift and they're really the people that can make or break that to a large extent. And I think, you know, Nate, I would, I don't even want to assume, I'll just ask you, are you in favor of a zoning change for purposes of going from business to industrial in this location? I mean, from your perspective, it makes sense.
Regardless of this, I would be entertaining that conversation anyway. I've had multiple people approach me with other industrial type uses, it's a perfect property for it.
Right. So, I think that that's really a great angle that we can approach it from, you know.
Right.
Regardless of what's going there, we should entertain the idea of changing this to industrial for the following reasons. Couple that with the fact that we're in support of your business being located there, you know, with your reservations about revenue and all that, but in a general sense, I think that we're all kind of on that, on that space. Getting buy-in from the planning board independent of us is, is great advice, I think, because they, they'll let us know what they think, they'll do it in idiosyncratic ways, but we'll find out. And then we'll know whether it's gonna work or whether there's certain aspects of it, you know, and they may have some suggestions that we haven't even thought of. I mean, they deal with the zoning and the planning of laying stuff out all the time and they're really smart guys, so.
Are you going to, or are you changing over from a nonprofit to a C corp, an S? Okay. So, Nate, what do we, is that another bylaw change as well that we do need to, because right now, under the existing bylaws, we only point to a nonprofit corporation, so we know that we have that issue also. We don't know if the Cannabis Control Commission is going to be making some sort of concession for the zoning, because do we point to the Mass General Law definition on the RMD? We actually specifically state it, I think, in our bylaws, which is the problem.
It would be more prudent and in conversation with council in the past, it's like whenever possible, you point to the MGL.
Okay.
And that way-
So, when it changes, we don't have to change it as well?
You're not.
They, of course, drafted this bylaw that's now flawed.
Yeah, of course they did.
So, drop security.
If I just might say quickly, is the zoning bylaw review committee, I believe, is meeting with the planning board on January fourth, if I'm not mistaken.
I thought, I think it's the twenty-fifth, Nate.
Twenty-fifth?
The twenty-fifth, that's what we decided at our ZB meeting.
Yeah, I don't think it's the fourth.
On a calendar. CDC is meeting on the fourth, if you want to meet about fireworks, you know. We're gonna meet that Thursday instead, yeah.
Take that all back.
Exactly.
So, I would certainly want, unrelated to the marijuana facility going there, I certainly would like the major rezoning to be industrial on forty-four and residential on Crooked Lane, I'll also talk about that, but, so the zoning changes, I would support some two or three substantial zoning changes, this being one of them. I could rather support this going to industrial unrelated to a marijuana grow facility, but I think it's the right place for industrial.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think about, you know, the fact that we'll have potentially two somewhat marijuana-related, you know, articles on it. We would have to do that anyways with regard, well, I suppose if they don't want to convert to a C or an S or-
Maybe you could just explain to me for a minute your pro-pharma profit and loss statement, not whether it's twelve million or ten million or whatever. How big do you want this grow facility to ultimately be, assuming that you're gonna be a grow facility for beyond medical, you get into recreational, how big a grow facility do you want?
So, the ultimate, and again, I will preface it to say that the intent is waiting, we would not do anything but medical until it's federally legal.
Exactly.
But it would be a multi, two-story, so eighty thousand square foot facility.
Eighty thousand.
Correct. Not all of that is obviously growth space, but, but once you get to that level, the majority would be growth.
Right, because every ten thousand square feet probably give you fifteen million in retail sales, if it's a grow facility.
It's a grow facility and a ten-
Yeah, that's probably right. Something in that neighborhood. So, I look at that as a very substantial opportunity for you folks and for the town. I'm a bit hesitant that it just is a grow facility and not with a benefactor, if you will, of the retail facility. I like the location because of the traffic, that it's out of town. It draws people, we went through this before, it draws people from Fall River and New Bedford, Brockton. I think it's a fabulous facility for a retail outlet and a full grow facility, whether it's retail, corporate, whatever, of eighty thousand square feet. I think it's a great use for that, to do just a, I'm just saying, if it's just a grow facility, I don't know where my support would be on that.
So, with all due respect, and part of the thinking on this is that, and maybe it's-
I don't want to blindside you when I say I support the industrial location, but I don't know that I support just a grow facility, so-
So, I think the point being is that we would certainly consider retail, going into it, the assumption was is that you would not be interested, because, because we would not be interested in selling recreational out of that next year, right? I mean, we would, we wouldn't, and so therefore, if it was going to be retail, it would be medical-only retail until it's federally legal, which could be several years, at which point, then we would entertain, you know, recreational sales, but, but we're just not interested in going there until it's federally legal.
Right, no, no, and I agree with that.
But I think we're okay and would consider working with the town if that's the Selectmen of the town's interest in that. And so, I think that's part of it is, you know, in watching and talking to other, when I was in front of you, I mean, you, this board is, is really good to work with compared to a lot of other towns. And I think you've been clear in using the word partner, and which is really nice from our perspective because we're looking to do something similar. And that's where, if we listen to you and you listen to us and then we both try and find the right solution for both our business and your town, then it works. And if, if part of what you want to see is the eventuality, or even if it's medical-only initially, then we could entertain that, I just didn't know if you wanted that.
So, I think though, you know, I'm not so hung up on having a cultivation facility without a retail component.
Right.
Mainly because of the fact that we've had this property sit there for a long time. And again, that's gonna be the concern, I think, to try to get over that hurdle at town meeting would be the potential for this property again. And I think that, you know, that the way to sell it also is the fact that you won't have that retail component. There is a benefit in the perception of that to people, that they won't know it's there. It's hidden behind all these woods, wetlands, dirt, gravel road, you know, whatever it happens to be, a bunch of mink running around going crazy. You know, so there's this, there's this perception of people won't even know it's there. And that's the plan, you know, that I assume that you have there, is that you want this to be here, it has easy highway access when you start to do transportation and it's not gonna have a big impact on Lakeville, which is why we don't have the, which now, under the new rules and regs too, with the host community, with the retail, you actually have to prove that you have expenses that are being offset against the revenue that you have coming in from those facilities. So, this is a little bit of a different animal. Where, do you have letters or are you proposing, you know, in other towns for local dispensaries? It doesn't even matter, you know, for us, but-
Yes.
You know, clearly you've got, is it one, two, three locations?
It would be three eventually.
Three locations, okay. Okay. So, yeah, I mean-
There's certainly, there's certainly an advantage to what you're proposing over the retail aspect in the sense that there's less traffic and all that. And I think, but I think John's concern is, is maximizing the revenue for the town based on the circumstances.
Right.
That's really what he's seeing.
I think that the question or the point then being is that we already know we have one going in on Kenneth Welch, property's been purchased, you know, we'll see, you know, I mean, it's always funding, it's the biggest issue. But, you know, so that would be the retail component that we would have, that we'd be working with. These guys wouldn't be anywhere on, you know, the spectrum in terms of having participation in that retail market here. So, you wouldn't be competing against each other, you would just have the location and the grow facility.
But you started out, the beginning of the meeting, talking about maximizing the value of the property. And there's no maximization for a grow facility at all for the town of Lakeville.
Right, we have an eighty thousand square foot building that we'll get property tax on, we'll have the host community payment that we'll have coming in and that's it, which is in addition to the host community payment.
In addition to an empty, empty lot.
Or an eighty thousand square foot building.
You get the value, you get the value of the building is what you get.
Right.
That's really what the town gets.
Yep.
And I get that. I'm happy if something's there, but I can just think of, oh my God, you're doing this for marijuana and the problem I have with the towns recently is, we've been supportive for the most part. And there's way too many towns in the state that said, oh, I know it got passed at the ballot, but I really don't want it in my town and I don't know where we'll, where we'll go on this, you know how town meetings are. I mean, I can support that, but the maximization of the, of the taxed property would just be the building, which is better than an empty fund. I get it. But we're just, we talk amongst ourselves because of the ridiculous open meeting laws, so we don't talk at the local bar.
I get it.
So, we talk about-
You don't talk about this stuff at the local bar.
Probably be a much more interesting conversation.
I think, I certainly, well, Aaron, our chairman will wrap it up, but I think we're all generally supportive of a non-opposition, that type of thing.
So, would you like us to vote, to, to sign a letter of non-opposition relative to this parcel contingent upon, of course, the-
I don't think we can.
All right, so-
Probably have to run it by town council, just to make sure that we don't have an issue with it.
I think it has to say that it conforms, but we can check on that.
So, and I, I'll just leave this with you. Our, our attorney did some research on this and so this is what the town of Monson did. Similar, but it's a conditional letter and it basically says, as Rita said, it says it's conditional, but Rita's right, is for the state, it has to say it meets zoning requirements. But this is, it gives us, you know, as you said, some comfort within it.
Yes.
Clearly states that it's conditional and that a follow-in letter would come.
That's right.
But-
I'm comfortable with that and, you know, and you can verify with, you know, we'll just make the whole thing contingent upon-
Town council's pretty-
Verifying or having town council review it.
Yep, that's-
Okay.
I just know that the building commission has to certify it in the official one, so.
Yep. I mean, we'll, we'll give you as much as we can give you at this time.
Right, right, right. And we're all excited about a business going in there.
That's helpful.
There's no question.
All right, so, do you have anything else you'd like to add? If not, I'll just, I'll ask for a motion and we'll, we'll move forward. Anybody like to make a motion?
Motion for non-opposition as drafted in the town of Monson about non-opposition after review of the letter from our attorney.
That it will be-
Well, subject to, subject, right, subject to many subjects.
Okay.
That's a hell of a, that's a hell of a motion, second that.
Most vague motion ever.
Attorneys, leave it in the attorneys, everyone makes money.
Do you want to second that?
I will second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, it's unanimous?
All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, nice to see you.
Great to see you again.
Merry Christmas, nice to meet you, nice to see you again, nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rita, thank you very much, Mrs., nice seeing you.
Good seeing you, Aaron.
Thank you very much, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Powell, Merry Christmas.
Oh, yes, he did, I'm sure he did.
Can I ask which attorney you guys are working with?
Uh, we're with Ms. Levin.
It's been friends and Levinson.
They're good, I mean, they like to spend four hours telling us what we can't do and the fifth hour telling us how to do it.
Oh, my God.
And it's all billable.
You better tell your advisors.
Thank you again.
Merry Christmas, okay?
Thanks again, Merry Christmas to you.
Take care.
All right, good night, all.
Good night, thank you very much. Okay, so number five, we have a request to appoint Michael Smith as a special, oh no, I'm sorry, Nate Darling's number three.
This is a point, this is a letter of opposition, it's a letter of support.
That's fine.
So-
Hey, will you work out the details of town?
It's the non-opposition with the same type of language that talks about it.
Hang on, let's see what we got here.
You can always say something, exactly.
Thumbs, thumb prints and all-
Got a cream one?
Somebody busted, you know, their finger in-
Oh, look, they actually have the thing, so you can tell what you're in for.
They're all gross ones left, except this one.
Strawberry green.
You see the orange filling you put it back?
I don't think that was in the right spot.
Or then. I got duped. That was a peanut butter crunch.
Yes, I printed out Nate's thing.
After Nate, can we do a five-minute recess?
Yes, sandwich break.
Another sandwich half?
I don't know where they went to, but hopefully they're there.
We have, we have one assessor, right?
What do you mean? Principal assessor?
Yeah.
What?
It's assessor's office.
Consultant.
Okay.
No, you have three.
You're not critiquing my grammar, right?
It's that sign, it's actually that sign.
Oh, my God.
I was like-
What does it say?
It just says, no, it just says assessor office. It decided to ignore any concept of plural.
Call it office of assessing.
And or possessive.
You'd come in tomorrow and tell all of that.
Oh.
He had to rethink that.
Call it an office of assessing.
Is perfectly fine.
That would be fine.
I've walked by it ten times and I didn't notice.
It says assessor office.
Okay, we'll take care of that.
So, number three is to meet with Nathan Darling to discuss the budget for the redesign of the town office building. So, thanks for putting this together, I know I've been a pain in the ass to, on both of you for the sake of getting this, but I wanna-
No, not at all, Aaron.
Of course not. We only wanted to, we only wanted to sell the building a year and a half ago.
You got more money because it took so long.
It's part of the strategy.
Right.
So, this is great, I think you've got, you know, you've got a design that we're all comfortable with, you've got the phases and some relative costs, obviously the caveat is- is that it depends a lot on, on procurement. Did anybody have questions about Nate's plan here?
No, only the tax collector layout really isn't a layout, because it's not walled out or anything, I kind of get the intent, but I question whether you need to do that second door, and if you will, that this becomes, we'll call it Deborah Kenny's office, which can go in this way, and maybe if that's done away with, you have a door there now. But that, that's just minor.
Yep.
I, I agree with pretty much all that's written down here.
So, if I may, Aaron.
You may.
So, the, these are just some contemplated changes for now, until we figure out whether or not it's going to be financially viable, get input from department heads and employees, and then, and then solidify this. We've gone back and forth a little bit with the architect and I, and come up with what I believe to be the best possible solution, but again, I've got an email out to the department heads, the affected folks. I've asked them to, to come to me with questions, comments, concerns, I want to work with them closely, make sure we get their buy-in to do this.
Yep, renovation by committee, it was, it's always the best way to make decisions.
It may add to the timeframe, but I...
Add another year and a half.
I do think, I do think, I mean, it's the right thing to do.
No, it is, and, and I appreciate you for doing that, I saw the email earlier today, and I think you're right. So this is, this is a, a draft, if you will, but I think that it's a good, it's a good starting point, and I think, you know, our plan is to get feedback from department heads, like, maybe incorporate some of the, you know, those types of things to make the space more specific to the needs of the department, but generally speaking, this is, is kind of the layout we're starting with.
It's the most reasonable layout, and I would like, I mean, with the support of the selectmen, I would like to get started on that sooner than later. I have no reason to believe that we can, can't start right in on the, this, this assessors' piece, which is phase one.
Yep.
We can't do them all at once, because we have no place to, you know, for everybody else to work, so, as we phase, on the phasing plan, we're just kind of shuffling folks around, and it seems like it's going to work out really good, so I wouldn't mind starting right in on phase one and see how this is all going to work out, but I'd like to get the buy-in from, you know, the department heads first, and...
Yep.
And then maybe soon into January, maybe the first, second week of January, I give them, you know, for response, and then maybe by the third week of January, I'd like to just start.
Right.
To your point, it, it has probably lasted too long, so if we get right on it, and start in on it, see how it starts to work, I mean, I think the phasing plan's relatively inexpensive, I think I can start it right out of the maintenance budget.
So, with all of this, with the, those are file cabinets, I assume, in the inspections? Like, is it going to be like...
The layouts, and I, and I put that in the, in the phasing plan, don't get, try not to get hung out on what's, hung up on what's inside of it, that was just conceptual.
Just giving you an example.
No, no, but the, the big question is, what we've wanted since like day one, is one set of files, you know, that would be located, I would assume, you know, in general in that area then, because that, and so we are consolidating files to get them to that point too.
So if you see in the building department, what is now, what is now the building department, there's no file cabinets to speak of. Well, I'll have to have a small set of file cabinets in there for stuff that I use mainly, but not actual property addresses. Same thing with the town where our tax collector, they'll have their own files, good, yeah, they can find that out.
And that's one of the things we didn't include in the cost, was, were the file cabinets that we got pricing on from W.B. Mason.
Okay, I think it's great.
Right. I think structurally upstairs, let's say the selectmen and a few other people move up there, that's not big money, but it'd be painted, carpeted.
Painted carpet.
But after people have moved around, we then need to take from where conservation is upstairs, conservation agent is upstairs, the step-down coming from the offices to where Dave Goodfellow is today, we'd want to change that area ultimately to, to benefit the fire department, which would be a different scenario.
Right, that would probably be the, the women's, you know, quarters or what, right?
Yeah, yeah, something like that, right, right, so, so we don't want to forget that there'll be another five or ten thousand dollars for us to move upstairs, whatever that number is.
Yep.
But then, secondarily, and later on, is what we would do in the fire, I'll call it the fire quarters.
Dan actually has sort of a layout of what he'd like to see up there.
Right, right.
Yeah, and that's a reasonable use of that space, I mean, it's, if it's not being used...
Right.
For, for those other departments, because they've moved around, or, I mean, it's really only a few people up there anyway, so...
One thing, you know, I think it might be, this might be silly, and it's like aesthetic, but, you know, like you go into every town hall, and there's signs, and, and again, I'm not picking on like the paper signs, but like to actually direct people as to where they would go, I mean, it's not much, but...
We have the map out on the wall there to show.
The actual, over the doorway signs that come straight out perpendicular to the wall.
Exactly, that come out that people can see.
Have you been to the new Plymouth Town Hall?
Nah.
Have you?
No.
It's unbelievable, Twenty-Sixth Court Street, they just moved a month ago.
Oh no.
It's, I'll bet you it was a, I don't know, how many mil, twenty, thirty million dollar building?
Rainham redid theirs, and theirs came out really good, it's, it's low-key, but it came out very, very nice.
Yeah.
Carp is my favorite, was a rehab of their town hall, and...
This is the old courthouse on Court Street.
Oh, okay.
So, when you look at it, it's up on the hill, and it's brick, and you see what you think is just the old courthouse, which is the first part of the structure, but then they added on to the back, and it goes right up the hill, and it's, it's huge, it's just a giant, it's awesome.
I do, I do agree with prophecies.
But my point is, is that when you go in there, they have these big signs that say assessors, and then they say, you know, everything, everything is very easy to find, and it's very, it's really well laid out, it's a, you know...
Right, yeah.
Well, having the main, you know, potentially having the main accessible entrance here, as soon as you walk into this area, you'll be everywhere you need to be. You have the tax collector, you know, or tax collector, town clerk, assessors, have some signage down there pointing you at inspectional services, that's it.
Yeah.
You know, four locations.
Yeah.
So we'll be, I think we'll be good, I'm excited.
All right, awesome. Well, yeah, I think, yeah, get your feedback, and then maybe just let us know what you hear from that, and then we'll go from there, and, yeah, and break some ground in January.
Sounds good to me.
So to speak.
Pick some ground walls.
Yeah, pull some carpet up.
No digging dirty.
All right, did you have anything else?
No, that was it.
All right, well, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I had no sandwiches.
Oh yeah.
Sandwich break. Taking a break. We're taking a break.
Take five.
Let cam five. Thank you.
Hey folks, we're back in action. We're on number five, request to appoint Michael Smith as a special police officer. Chief Avalara has requested that the board appoint Michael Smith as a special police officer. If appointed, his term would expire on July thirty-one, twenty eighteen. We have a letter from our chief asking to appoint Michael Smith, he's a Lakeville resident, he's a retired state police officer, or I should say he had recently retired after twenty-five years from the Massachusetts State Police, it does not specify whether he was an officer, but clearly he was involved in policing. So, I will entertain a motion that we appoint Michael Smith as a special police officer with a term to expire on July thirty-one, twenty eighteen.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six, our request from Derek Maxey to connect six residential lots to Taunton Water on Rhode Island Road and Thirty-three Main Street. The proverbial white house. We got these applications. This would be Derek's proposed Form A, so-called Form A lots for residential purposes on, on Route seventy-nine or Rhode Island Road, of which I think, we talked about the idea of, of this being kind of a non-impactful use of the property, and that I'm certainly okay with the idea of providing water. Does anybody else have any questions or comments about this?
No.
Okay, I move that we approve the request to provide water for the six residential lots on Rhode Island Road to Taunton Water and the Thirty-three Main Street property, White House.
I'll, that's your motion, I'll second that.
Yep, any further discussion? What happened to the Middleborough water, I thought that White House was hooked up to Middleborough. Have you heard, did he just opt to go with Taunton all around?
I think, I would not support hooking up to any Middleborough water, so...
All right, well, fair enough.
He's asked for Taunton water that I would vote for.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries, it is unanimous. Agenda item number seven, renew and vote to renew public entertainment on Sundays licenses, dancing on weekdays licenses, livery licenses, and coin-operated amusement licenses, license, C-O-A-L, coal. Here we have it, I will stop eating to read them. The livery license expires December thirty-one, twenty eighteen, JP's Limousine Service, two vehicles. Dancing on weekends.
Days.
Oh, I'm sorry, weekdays.
You can't dance on weekends.
La Baron Hills Country Club, Orchid of Hawaii Fraternal Order of Eagles and Lakeville Golf Club, Inc. Coin-operated amusements. Uh, the Eagles, one machine. Public entertainment on Sundays.
They forgot a machine, so it's actually two machines.
All right, two machines, thanks for the correction.
The Eagles are...
Eagles.
Okay, thank you.
Public entertainment on Sundays, for Sundays during two thousand eighteen, licenses expired December thirty-one, twenty eighteen, La Baron Hills Country Club, Orchid of Hawaii Fraternal Order of Eagles, Lakeville Golf Club, Inc. So, with that said, I move that we approve those licenses as read.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item number eight, review and vote to renew class one and class two annual licenses. Eight class two used car dealers and two class one dealers have submitted their renewal applications for January one, twenty eighteen, through January one, twenty nineteen. It's probably actually December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, right?
High license is on January first.
They run three hundred and sixty-six days?
They do.
Wow, okay. Learned something new. Learned something new and completely irrelevant almost every single day in my life. Nate has inspected these premises and found them all to be in compliance, they have a copy of Nate's memo. We can vote to renew the licenses, they would all expire on January one, twenty nineteen. The class two license renewals are... Salvatore Cuccinotti, DBA SC Auto, get it, S for Salvatore, and C for his last name, which I can't pronounce.
Cuccinari.
United Automotive, oh, I'm sorry, Nineteen South Kingman Street, United Automotive Services, Two ninety-eight Bedford Street, Lakeville Auto Sales, Thirty-five Taunton Street, Shanick Autobody, Inc., Thirty-five Bedford Street, Chris Altiere, DBA C and E Enterprises, Forty-three Freetown Street, Leonardo Soliana, DBA Soliana Auto Sales, Eighteen Staples Shore Road, Andrews, Andrews Family Automotive, Seventy-nine Main Street, Linda Bury and Jason Bury, DBA Elite Auto Sales, Four thirty-one Bedford Street. Each one of these applicants is paying two hundred dollars for the privilege of selling used cars in Lake, town of Lakeville. Class one license renewals, Russo's Recreational Rentals, Inc., One fifty Bedford Street, Route forty-four Collision Center RVs and Boats, Eight Harding Street, two hundred dollars apiece for them to get their class one license renewals, so I move that we grant those licenses as read.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, it's unanimous. Agenda item number nine, review and vote to renew common vehicular, vehc- vehicular licenses for various businesses in Lakeville. They are up for renewal with an expiration date on December thirty-one, twenty eighteen. They are as follows. Baldi's Pizza, Inc., Pizzeria, Inc., Forty Main Street, Cisco's Pizza, One sixty-six County Street, Corporate Chefs, Inc., for Talbets, One seventy-five Kenneth Welch Drive, Sandy LLC, Three, Three Three Zero Bedford Street, Duncan, J and J's Seafood Drive-In, One ninety-seven County Street, Amorak Educational Services, LLC, Ninety-six One Hundred and One Twelve Howland Road, for the FL School System, Thirty-one, Two thirty-two Main Street, The Sunshine Cafe, Twelve Harding Street, Royal Pizza, Sixty-eight Main Street, Something's Bruin Book Cafe, Inc., Two four one Main Street, Tanned, Inc., DBA Subway, Three thirty Bedford Street, Nextine, Inc., for Ocean Spray, One Ocean Spray Drive, The Back Nine Club, Seventeen Heritage Hill Road, Pacoey Brook Golf Club, LLC, DBA Pacoey Brook Pub, Twenty Leonard Street, Orchid of Hawaii Restaurant, Two oh one Bedford Street, Lakeville Eagles, Two seventeen County Street, The Broken Tea Virtual Golf, One sixty-six County Road, Lakeville Golf Club, Forty-four Clear Pond Road, La Baron Hills Country Club, One eight three Rhode Island Road, so I move that we approve these licenses as read to expire on December thirty-one, twenty eighteen.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion, motion carries, it's unanimous. Kelly Shumway is at it again, she wants us to rescind her junk dealer and collector's license at Two ninety Bedford Street. We issued Kelly a junk dealer and collector license in October, she's not moving forward with renting the unit, she asked us to rescind her contract. As such, I move that we rescind, I'm sorry, her permit, I move that we rescind her permit.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Nancy was so interested, she got up and left the room during this discussion.
I was going to go check on my antiques.
All those in favor?
That's what she was going to do there, right?
Aye.
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 I actually was going to leave over the next one, because I can't vote on the next one.
All right. Serge, Serge, has gone out to bid for DPW Services, and has requested that the board award the following bids, this is agenda item number eleven. This stuff is great. This is the item... This is the item. So I'll read item, company name, then total price. Pavement Reclamation, that's the item. Murray Paving and Reclamation is the company. In Place Hot Mix Asphalt. Item, PJ Keating is the company. 2825, 282957 is the number. The item of Micro Paving. Seal Coating, Inc. is the company. $178,200. Polymer Modified Crack Sealing from Crack Sealing, Inc. Chlorinated Rubber Traffic Line Painting by Markings, Inc. Structure Work, Tasco Construction, $31,937.50. And last but not least, everybody's favorite, Sidewalk Construction and Setting of Curbs and Edging, Tasco Construction, $66,772.80. The total of all services is $675,000. $675,005. Phew. All right. So do we have any questions, comments, concerns about any of this stuff?
I have questions on marking inks. Tracy, who did this year's? The roads that we just did? If it was marking inks, I'm reluctant to renew it.
Isn't it always been like every time?
Well, no, the year before, the year before was okay.
If I may.
We threw the last guy out before that.
We also had the problem Jeremy had sent pictures on the crack ceiling. Remember the pictures? It was not, and they had to come back out and fix it all.
I think, I'm not sure if it was a two-year contract. In '15, Highway Safety did it for the '16.
Yeah?
I can't seem to find a contract other than that one.
I guess.
Oh, wait a minute. Here's one. Highway Safety did it. We did a contract in February of 2017.
Highway Safety?
It was different.
This is a different company.
We've used them a lot over the years. I'd say we've probably used them, I'd say at least 10 years.
The one that just did it.
Yep, that was Highway Safety.
I think he gets a DUI award or something.
This line not straight.
But I'll tell you, before we do it, we'll make sure that there's some kind of a performance right in there. Okay. That was only my only question.
My question is, crack sealing is done by Crack Sealing, Inc. Why isn't the micro paving done by Micro Paving, Inc.? Why is it done by Seal Coating, Inc.?
No idea.
Okay.
They're all brother-in-laws and they're all just in damn collusion for price fixing.
Yeah, probably.
Probably.
All right. So I will make a motion that we accept and award the bids as read.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
One abstention.
You know the guys that did the crooked lines?
Is in collusion with Micro Sealing, Inc.
I'm actually just trying to make them change their name.
Okay.
I'm working with the Secretary of State right now to do Micro Paving, Inc.
All right. Let's talk, while we're on the subject, let's talk about our Superintendent of Streets, or lack thereof. Don't have one. And let's talk about that. So this says, all right. So John, you have some ideas you want to bring up?
Right, well, it's not in the appointing. John spoke with Roger Hamilton, whose last day is tomorrow for the winter. I talked to Georgie Freitz, not Georgie Taylor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Georgie Freitz. And so George Freitz will be taking over the duties of Roger Hamilton during the winter season. And he, we've agreed upon the pay, 40 hours a week. It's very similar to what, not the superintendent's pay, but other people are getting paid. And he gets time and a half for the storms, exactly as we do for other employees. And this should cover us through the winter and ar, until you find a superintendent.
Okay, great. Now, that's good news. I mean, you know that, you know, I think that there's this idea within the committee that's looking for the replacement, that, you know, there's kind of a time crunch here, which I think to a certain degree there is, but it's good to know that somebody's in place for the interim timeframe. So if, you know, we can continue, continue to provide services to the town relative to keeping the roads clean.
Georgie Freitz did it all his life, and he was, he was the assistant there for years. So it should, it should work out well.
Okay, great. Do we have any new business?
I can't remember. Did you vote to name Roger as interim? Should you vote to name George as the interim?
I don't know. Did we vote on, did we vote on Roger?
I think you did.
All right.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we have Georgie Freitz be the interim superintendent.
Gotta call him Georgie, though.
George, George, Mr. Freitz. Have to be careful, Mr. George Freitz. Okay.
Mr. Chair, on the Superintendent of Streets, the, I'm not sure how long the ad stays on the beacon. Is this something, do we want to put it back on there if it's gone?
Well, I would think you want to keep it on there.
Want to do any sort of advertising? I mean.
Yeah, so we haven't received any additional applicants other than that last one.
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. I think we want to keep looking. I mean, not to say that the applicants aren't good, but we haven't had that many.
Do you want to, do you want to reach out to a newspaper north of here instead of doing the standard time south?
Isn't, how much was it for the print version of the beacon? You know, I mean, that's really like the audience. I know that we put it on, be online, but we're a little pricey.
On the.
It's not in the print one. The print one is expensive. The online one is a lot cheaper than the print.
Right, but I think the online one is used more frequently, but we also put it in with some of those highway.
No, we didn't.
We didn't.
They don't have.
Oh, really?
And then Chris Peck gave us, no, well, the other two associations, they're.
How much was, how much is the beacon, the printed version?
Printed version, I want to say it's at least 500.
It's in your memo.
You look into the position for ABBA.
Right.
You need to put it in the printed version.
I actually think it's a.
Yeah. Yeah, put it in the printed version.
Two to one. Put it in.
I don't think it's quite that much.
Doesn't make, doesn't make any difference.
A month ago.
Doesn't make any difference.
All right. So that's in. It's done. Any other new business?
Yes.
Go ahead. You do that. I just want to talk about solo panels and police station. Not, not a long-winded one.
So I just want to, last year, what we did with Winterfest fireworks is that we've raised enough money with the CDC so far that we can offer the $3,500 fireworks show.
Nice.
This year, where we are soliciting additional funds so that, like last year, this is what we did, is we authorized the 3,500, we got additional funds, so we were able to raise it to the 4,500. I am asking for the ability to sign the contract for the fireworks and future contracts with an upgrade on behalf of the CDC, which is a representative.
I make that motion that we allow Mitzi to sign the firework contract.
I will second it.
Future.
And any subsequent agreements relative to the implementation of the much anticipated and always appreciated fireworks for the Winterfest.
And I have to say, Aaron and I could not have raised that money. Mitzi did the bang-up job.
We'll have a K1 speed cart there. We'll be there.
Ooh, nice.
It's not gonna go anywhere, I don't think, but demo cars.
That's a donation.
Yeah, I would, yeah, that'd be great.
So we made that motion?
Yep. All those in favor? Aye.
You second it, and everyone says aye.
And I'll put it on your next agenda to ratify the vote on an agenda, because this was.
Okay.
Not on the agenda.
All right. Any other new business?
No.
Old business?
Old business? Is there a quick update on the solo panel situation at the train station?
I have been in touch with Senator Roderick, and he's been in touch with Karen Polito, and we're gonna have a meeting with someone, but he said he would have to get back to me.
That's fine.
They heard us loud and clear.
Okay. The, the police station, maybe, I'll just speak to, I went to one of their, quickly, just went to one of their meetings last week. And I, from a, from a monetary point of view, Mitzi had indicated she might be interested in going to the next one, and I don't know if you still want to do that. And I think that, I just have some further questions, so maybe we can talk about them before you have another meeting. Not a long-winded conversation, just to go over what was presented at the last meeting and what questions I might have. I don't want to try to drag those guys in here, but maybe the three of us just do a five-minute review of the numbers to try to make sure that we're coming in at the 8 million. We're not making that happen. I just have some questions. I'll give you an example. If, if something was brought up for $20,000, the project manager says, oh, we have that in the general fund up here, we'll just move it down into the soft cost. I really think we need to, and maybe you have that, an accounting of, of the, of the building, what's in there. Because what I think is happening is there may be a lot of money in there that either they'll use or if we take out, I want the building to be reduced. So I'll give you an example. If you, if you take away $100,000 and say, no, we're not gonna do that, the building should come down by 100. I, I got the feeling that it will allow the, the builders to increase their quote by 100,000. The building still comes in at 8 million dollars, but we may be giving up some things.
So, I mean, are you looking for like the AIA sheets, really, like for construction purposes, kind of, like, which does go through in details? I mean, that'll be after we go out and bid, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's not the document of the 100 pages of the sheets, but what is in there. You know, not the square foot of the building, but if they have $100,000 in there for communication, equipment, and then we say, oh, no, just run the conduits, and the $100,000, I don't really know what's happening to that, whether it comes out or that's the price for the conduits.
Is that information available now, or would it only be available when we actually go out to bid?
I think they have it all. I think they've had two, two of their cost estimate, cost estimators quote those items.
To see the line items that add up to the total.
Right. I'm only concerned, not for the minutia, but I think we say, oh, no, let's not do that. Let's reduce the cost so that we're gonna come in at the 8 million. But let's say we take out $300,000 worth of items, and the building should have been reduced by 300,000, not become more affordable.
Right.
And the, the outbuilding, if I understood the outbuilding to be 808,000 of the picture today, then the rest of the other building should have come in at 7.2. And then, I'm not gonna debate whether the project manager's 400, the designer's 400, but just generally, if the outbuilding was 800, the building should come in at 7.2. Once we say that, and if we're looking for a 7,200,000 building, I might be more apt to say, let us, when I say us, let us do the building in the town. Middleborough just had to spin theirs out, because that outbuilding continued to escalate from 600,000 to 800 to over a million dollars, and they just took it out, and they're just taking a different approach and cut it in half. So I just have some questions. I could bring those questions to you with the forms that I got the last meeting. I don't want to take a long time of your time, but they're ready to go out to quotes. You're gonna have a meeting early Jan, early January, I think.
When is the next meeting? Do you know?
Early January, and then they're going out by the end of January.
But it will be in January.
And I didn't want to say, give us that information at that last meeting, because then it would delay going off a quote.
I think, though, you know.
I don't have, I'm being, rambling on.
No, no, I get your point. Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, in the original, I think it was the OPM agreement, where it talked about what the building designed and what it would cover and all that stuff, and it stopped short on certain things, and I think it was IT-related, if I remember correctly, where it said, you know, we get you, kind of like what you're saying, is get to the conduits, but not go beyond that. But there was, do we know what the final costs would be? If we go back to that original contract, because as we went through, it might have been the architect's contract, but I think it was in the OPM's contract, where it said, we'll do this, we'll do this, we'll do this, we won't do this, we won't do this, we'll get you to this point, but we won't do this. Because I'd like to almost see just in general, or see if the committee can see, okay, in total, well, what, what is it that we haven't even addressed in terms of the cost? And when we go out to bid, what do we need to still finish it to the specs that we need and want? Because I do want that to be considered, because that, that's kind of what I think overall we were saying for the total cost of the building, but what if the completion costs, really, which they said are out of scope, are really another 3, $400,000? What are we doing about that? And I think I want to make sure everybody's mindful of the entire construction cost, which isn't just what goes through the OPM and the architect.
Well, oh, yeah, no, they, they have numbers for all that stuff.
I think, I think.
But that's, that's when you look at that number and, with all the different cost estimations, that's when it's anywhere between being close to 8 million dollars to being as much as, what, was it 9?
9.2.
So there's a wide range, and they don't necessarily know. Now, they, they've honed in on different discrepancies, and there's, there's a spreadsheet that Mike Forth did with his crew from Suffolk that shows the specifics on what was bid and the discrepancies in the price and the reason why there's discrepancies. So for example, one of them was the concrete. You know, one guy bid, or put a number down of, say, 200,000, and the other one was like 350. Well, the reason why was that the more expensive one was, was a thicker pour, it had a vapor barrier built in. I mean, there's just different aspects to that, that bid that made it more costly. So there's not always an apples-to-apples comparison in each line item, and that's kind of the issue with all of this, is that you have to tighten up that request for, for a proposal to a point where it's, everything's nailed down. And that's the job of the architect and the project manager, who's reviewing line by line all of that stuff to make sure that it's specific and that it's not the 350,000 one, if you really want the 200,000 one, or vice versa. So those guys have a lot of work to do, but those are the ones that do it. But with that said, absolutely come to a meeting and ask whatever questions you want so that you're, you have an understanding and you're comfortable with the process. Because, I mean, you were there. It was, I'm glad you were there, because I think that was a good meeting for you to be a part of, and you contributed greatly by being there. But they're, they're pretty information-dense sessions, and they're pretty, you know, you cover a lot of ground with them.
Right. I just got, got a little bit lost. What I didn't want to do is wait till, let's say the next meeting is January 16, and after that meeting, the, the quotes go out. And somewhere between now and then, to answer some of your questions.
If you formulate questions, I can get them to the project, to the OPMs, and they'll answer them.
Yeah.
So Taylor and Rick Palmeroy will, will take time to explain anything that, that people need in advance of a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to pull it at the meeting, because then that's not fair. They haven't pulled together those numbers. So let me go back on the numbers that were given to me.
Yep.
And somewhat address Mitzi's issue, what was in the original. And then, if it gets taken out, the price should reduce, not allow us to continue with the building. It should be reducing.
Right.
And I, I can tell you that if, if they had a budget of eight, if they have a budget of 8 million, I got the feeling the quotes coming in at 7,995,000, no matter what you. I got the feeling the quotes coming in at $7,995,000, no matter what you do.
Right.
Even if you take stuff out?
Yeah, and as I take stuff out. I get that part, but then there was stuff, oh, well, we have it up here in the, I'll call it in the building cost. But I don't mean the building cost of what the 12-by-12 room is. It's all those supplemental things. And it's got to do with the communications, it's got to do with the dispatch, it's got to do with the tower. You know, I've heard varying stories, and I don't, Aaron's the key person to that. And I don't want to, I'm not going there. But, oh, well, yeah, we had $100,000 in there, but we took it out. No, it was never in there before. I can just see these, because a change order, if to do it right is $100,000, to do a change order starts at like $200,000. It would be nuts.
Yep.
Yeah, and so what we ended up doing, I don't know, you probably don't even know this. The, because the bids ranged from anywhere from eight million to 9.2.
Bids meaning the cost estimators.
The cost estimators, sorry. The cost estimate. So the idea was, what could we reduce in the event that things come in high to still get the minimum? So that's where the idea came up, to not do the outbuilding. The outbuilding is a sacrificial lamb, to which it caused controversy. Because the whole design of the station hinged on having the outbuilding, which was really your storage. It was your basement. So here is the architect who sold us on this design now saying, oh, you know, you just have to let that go by the wayside. So that was a big disconnect for me. And I know Rich LeCamer was looking around like, what? How can you possibly advocate for this? And we had to really think it through in the terms of the strategy of getting the building built. And Nate was really the one who kind of laid it out that way. He said, hey, look, you do your main building, and then ad alternate one is 70% of the outbuilding. Ad alternate two is the entire building. So if somebody bids it and it comes in at eight million and everything's included, then you get it. But if everybody comes in and this is higher, and maybe this is eight million, then that's what you go with. But what if this comes in at eight million and this isn't, this is 9.2? Like some of the estimates say. At least you get your police station. Now, that to me was like, oh, well, but we've kind of represented to everybody that this is what it was gonna be. But then as you start to analyze why we thought that, it was really based on, and I'm not making excuses, but back-of-the-napkin math, in the sense that nobody knew what the hell they were saying.
It was just square footage times.
They were just had a formula. And maybe that isn't as accurate as we'd hoped it would be. So the consensus, and we voted on it, and it was unanimous, was to make this ad alternate one 70%, make the full building ad alternate two, with the understanding that at the very least, we'd get the full, brand-new police station built. And to John's point, maybe we go out to bid and put a space metal building back there as a garage or something else that's way more affordable if we do it after the fact or piecemeal.
But my concern was that I then drove the entire building to be eight million, when the building was only gonna be 7.2.
Right.
So then the project manager and designer screwed up by $800,000. And I got the feeling that that's not the committee. I got the feeling that's the way we're heading. I'm giving up an outbuilding, so I get an eight-million-dollar police station. Well, shit, I could have done that in the beginning.
Right, and see, we're really in a bad situation on this, because part of me wanted to say, hey, man, you told us this would come in at eight million for both. And now you've designed it and you're saying it can be anywhere from eight to 9.2. There's not a level of certainty that I'm comfortable with. Go back to the drawing board. But of course, you lose a year by doing that, and then when does the roof collapse? Right? Or, you know what I mean? So we have these external pressures that are driving the decision to try to get the building built.
But what, maybe I've lost something here? The 9.2 includes the $800,000 for the architect and the project manager.
Yeah, we did have 8.8.
Okay?
Yes, yeah.
And then 250 for the water line is subtracted out of the bottom.
I think we're gonna be okay, and I think we'll get our outbuilding, and I think it'll all happen. And I think we'll be on budget.
Yeah, but the concern is if the bid comes back at 9.2 for the construction, not increasing of the OPM and the architect that we've already.
No, but that included that stuff.
Is already in there.
Right, and then.
9.2.
I'm not as optimistic, I'm not as optimistic as.
But we backed out another hundred and something for alternates. So even the highest bid now is eight million with the outbuilding in there. But I'm just thinking, we voted eight million for the debt exclusion for the building, and we've used 800 in free cash. Is the thought that it's gonna be 7.2 for the building?
And that was the original. Actually, if you looked at the original spec that we saw was 7.2 plus the eight, you know, was the floor.
I guess it's really, right, right, right.
Eight total was the plan.
So maybe just put on, if Aaron agrees, on our next meeting, whatever that is, the third or the sixth, whatever.
The January third.
Is it five or six?
No, 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 it's next week.
Tomorrow's six for Bob Lucci.
No, not the sixth. It's the third. Just put down the police building for 15 minutes. I'll just post some questions.
Maybe we can just have whatever documents you have.
Right, right, I'll bring them and.
Financials committee.
Yeah, I'll bring some of that information. But it's really just touching upon it. If we give up a half a million dollars' worth of stuff to get a building and an outbuilding, I may be okay with that, but then the designer screwed up somewhere. You know, we overdesigned the building, and then everyone, they're happy like, oh, well, maybe we'll just take away this end of the building and do a seller. I'm not gonna do that.
No, no, I agree. No, I'm not happy. I'm not happy. I think, I'm on the same page with you, but that was like a catch-22. It's like, what do you do?
Right.
Do you scrap the whole thing? Well, then you're still gonna pay for the architect to redesign the new building. You lose a year. You know, I mean, it was a means to an end.
No, I know.
It was a compromise for the sake of moving forward
Right, but it's.
With understanding the potential danger of that.
And the next police meeting, which is like the second or third week of January.
We haven't scheduled it yet, I don't believe.
I think we did, but the second or third week of January. We should post the Board of Selectmen in case we ought to go.
Yeah.
We don't want to, trust me, I'm not heading towards Selectmen go to that meeting all the time. That would destroy the whole thing.
It's kind of too bad, I mean, I'm sure if you looked at it again, it's like if there was an option for the architect to do like the basics, and then these are the add-on costs associated with it of, you know, if you want to do this type of concrete, you want to do this. But maybe that's not what they do, because I don't know that they do that. You know, but it's a basic design.
The design, I think the design is sound. I think he did a great examination of the existing department in terms of the utilization of space. And I think it's the building to build. I really believe that. But, you know, the cost issue is somewhat disconcerting, disconcerting.
He didn't give me the warm, comfortable feeling. If you use the stock market as an example, I don't know what the stock market's gonna do. I said it's gonna go up by $100, it went up by $108 the next day. But he's right. He doesn't know what those quotes are gonna come in. But I believe they do. That's the problem I got. It's the same guys quoting it, it's the same designers, it's the same architects. And if they know they have a building that can come in at eight million dollars, that's what it's gonna come in at. The tragedy of the quoting process is, it's not gonna come in at 7.5. No one's gonna save you money. It's gonna come in $5,000 less than budget.
Everything's public record.
Public record.
You know how much is voted in?
You have $50,000 in the budget for, you know, IT expenses. I guess here's the contract, it's $50,000.
What a surprise.
$9.95.
What a surprise, right, okay. But let me try to spend 10 to 15 minutes next week on the third meeting.
All right.
I put it on.
Other old business?
No.
Well, yes.
Not for me.
The IT thing.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, thanks for putting that together.
I did see that.
So did everybody have a chance to review this?
Yeah, yeah, I think I did.
Did anybody have questions about this?
I mean, we're still, so who's Mass IT? That's another, like.
That's, no, actually, I believe it's state. It's through the common, well, technology. It's in our.
Oh, that's that tech, yeah, okay.
So they're gonna come in and analyze, they're really gonna take a look at the strategic plan, the audit that was done, analyze it and make, provide the recommendations for staffing.
We just don't have this IT planning and oversight, because they're supposed to oversee Phil at DynTech. That didn't happen, right? We just haven't hired it. Isn't that like, am I still back in the same thoughts that we had before? Which was, John had told us that we should get someone to oversee Phil and supervise him to make sure that he was following through with the IT.
And that's what John did through, his last contract ended September 30th.
Yes.
The things that weren't done that he pointed out, we never tested our disaster recovery. We worked with Phil for that. We needed to replace, we put in a server over at the COA. And John followed through with that with DynTech. We have our inventory, we have our five-year reuse. And he followed through with Phil on that.
Right, so you're really down to that email? As to what got done, is that right?
Yes, I put it in the email, all the things that he did follow through on.
Right, okay, that's what I read.
But I am, I can tell that I am gonna be short, because I did pay for John Barker for three months out of this year's information technology budget. So I don't think Phil spent that much on the setting up the assessors. There was, you know, we did have to do some IT there. TMLP took out everything today. Phil oversaw that in the assessors. So everything's disconnected over there. And there will be some IT cost for the redesign here. I don't see it being a whole lot, but right now I estimate, and I'd like to continue on with Tim now doing police and fire, having Phil stay here on the town side, let Mass IT come in and analyze everything for us.
I think we're okay with that at this point in time, yeah.
Okay, thank you, this is helpful. Any other old business?
I just, as far as new, just to update the board for your next agenda. I did, those are the plans that came in for the FOTIB, the two FOTIBs.
Oh, tomorrow night.
Yep.
Right. But this is, they only gave me one set of plans, you know, we have to give it to the police chief. All the town departments have to review it, and we have to send the comments. I think you remember doing that for Water Street. Every highway, every fire department, everyone has to look at it. And we send a letter into Mass Housing with any planning board, conservation.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't involved in Water Street, because I recused myself from it.
Oh, okay, well, that's the process. I did get the letter from Mass Housing on the 84 units. I expect the one on the 27 units, same attorney. I'll be getting the letter from Mass Housing on that. And there is a site visit scheduled, I think, for January 10th. I don't know if any of the town officials want to attend that.
Right. But I think the idea for tomorrow is to get.
Oh, it's the FOTIR application.
Is to get that squared away.
But that's gonna be helpful for our attorney, too, in our application.
Yep.
So as I did today, I had Lorraine put together a couple of things, just to cover that around the 26 units and the 84 units, and just a set of plans that backs that up, rather than, you know, a three-level view of all the building plans. So we're really just talking about 26 and 84. Of course, it's gone from, I think it was 122 to 166 to 120, I'm sorry.
Total number.
122 to 166, back to 100 and something now.
I just added it up at Master Plan last night.
110. So it's gone back and forth from a high of 166 units down to 110 now. But I don't have a lot of questions regarding that. I mean, I'll save my questions for the attorney tomorrow, right, right. I get what he's doing.
So, and Master Plan's been meeting regularly on our updated affordable housing plan, which is important to get in if we're gonna go forward with the FOTIR. We should have the final document in January. The Board of Selectmen have to vote to approve it, and the Planning Board have to approve it. And then it gets certified by the state.
Which Selectmen's on the, is Aaron on the?
Not anymore.
No one, no one.
We had too many meetings.
Okay.
I jumped off it.
Okay.
We changed the charge, actually.
We've been meeting right regularly.
Part of what I read today, we'll have to read that, you know, that they want to build 19 affordable units per year, so on and so forth. We only built 26 units.
In a whole year.
Well, there's 28 in just those two.
Oh, oh, yeah, but if this plan hadn't come through, you know, they want a housing commission. We're back to that again.
No, not Housing Authority. A Housing Partnership is different, John.
Yeah, right.
The state wants that?
No, the committee. You have to put goals and strategies together, not that.
Wouldn't it be helpful if, you know, if you just let us know? I guess we can just look it up as to when those meetings are, if you wanted to go. I mean.
That two-page summary I think you showed me today, Lorraine? Maybe you can just forward that to Mitzi and Aaron.
I mean, that might be a good meeting to just get an update on. You know what I mean?
I don't want to do anything that partners us with the state anymore.
Well, the Housing Partnership is in the town itself. It is not, right.
The whole state.
Right, when I look at it and someone.
What was it that I was reading?
Nightmare, the solar panels and moving the train and then.
Then that would change your attitude.
Fighting for all this money. They're supposed to serve us. We're not supposed to sit and beg and grotte for the money that we gave them with our taxes to reallocate it, because they broke promises, and then they, it's just ridiculous. And maybe I'm being cynical, but I've had it.
Hey, you know.
Merry Christmas.
We got to get a nice letter, you know, signed by the governor and Karen Polito on the, you know, green communities.
They won't even answer our letter when we have a serious concern relative to the safety of our neighborhood.
Constituent Aid Services answered our letter.
We didn't even get a signed letter, but they'll sign this crap that promotes green energy. When the MBTA jerks came down and said that we don't even believe in green, well, don't you want to support the environment? We're one of the first green communities in the state. And in fact, we're one of the few who have reached the 20% goal.
Oh, 10? I, there's a lot of communities. I was surprised that only 10. I, that was impressive.
We're so green.
Moving on.
Yeah, let me have, I'm asking Lorraine to forward to Mitzi and Aaron. I think it was two pages about what I call affordable house. I think you.
They're just strategies and goals, John.
Strategies that I don't know that any of us agree with.
There's strategies that we will not adopt if the state is going to then have one over on us.
The last thing on your next agenda, too, will be the bids for the office trailer.
All right, we don't need the data dump. Ready? I move that we go into data, data dump. I move that we go into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of Trokey v. Lakeville et al., Superior Court, CA Number 1783, CV 00700. Holding the meeting in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigation position and the chair, so declares I do. And pursuant to MGL 30, Chapter 30A, Section 2187, to comply with the open meeting law, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22F, approval of executive session meeting minutes for December 6, 2017. And not come back into open session.
Second.
Second.
So help me God.
Powley.
Hi.
Burke.
Hi.
Hollenbeck.
Hi. Hi.